Ready.
Ready.
Oh, look at here we are.
Let me call this council meeting to order. Thank you. Well, I welcome you on such a cold evening that you braved the cold to come out this evening. It's February 12th, 2015. May I have a roll call, please, Ms. Sarses?
Ms. Darrow.
Here.
Mr. Engel.
Here.
Ms. Hanekin.
Here.
Mr. Molnar.
Here.
Ms. Tully.
Here.
All right. I would like to ask our President Rita Darrell to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, after which Jan Tully will lead us in the invocation.
The allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I begin with the invocation, I'd like to say that we lost a great friend of the city of Macedonia with Bob Bolton's passing. Some of you may have known him through Wendy's, some of you have seen him at different events. Bob always had a smile and had a love in his heart for the city. Before I do the invocation, I'd really like to take about a few seconds just to remember Bob, if everyone would bow their heads. Thank you. God, we confess the sin of our human condition, and we pray for your forgiveness. We are caught in self-centered thinking and self-focused living. We cannot see beyond our own needs to the needs of those around us. We are content to live within our comfort zone and are hesitant to step out in faith. Forgive us. Amen.
All right. We're going to go into the next part of our meeting and address our minutes. Do I have any changes to the minutes of January 8th, 22nd, 2015? Or do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept the regular meeting minutes of January 8th and 22nd, 2015.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Next is the special meetings of January 28th and February 5th and 8th, 2015. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I believe it's the February 8th, Sunday, minutes? I have a question about those. I think it would be to you, Mark. I didn't pull it up. I wish I did. On there, it says, on the minutes, it says, the motion is there, and then it says, "Council Darrell moved." Does it need to say correctly, does it say that Council Darrell introduced motion? How is that supposed to read?
That's good enough.
Okay. Because I was just wondering, just to be, you know, clear on that.
You can do that.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain from February.
I abstain from February 5th and 8th.
All right. Moving on next, we have a financial report. Would like, does someone like to make a motion acknowledging receipt?
I'll make a motion acknowledging receipt of the financial report dated December 31st, 2014.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Next, we're going to move into the section of the program where we have comments from the public. When you make your comments, we ask prior to the meeting that you sign in on our sign-in sheet, and then when you make your comments, you come to the front. We have a microphone here and state your name and address. First on the list this evening is John Madajasic.
All right. The reason I am here tonight is to give residents a view on what I see as a complete disregard for what the residents of the city deserve. I sat in on an October 23rd, 2014 work session when discussions took place on matters concerning the mayor. The mayor openly admitted to taking of free snow plowing and garbage pickup. He tried to explain away his reasons for getting these services free. He then had the audacity to blame the finance director for not having caught this and brought it to his attention. This is not a one week, one month, or even one year. It's over several years. Paying back what you took from the residents of the city is required as restitution, not a free pass to stay employed. Mr. Molnar stated in the work session, "The mayor should just pay the money back." Does that work that way, Mr. Molnar? When you steal from your employer, which is us, the residents of the city, you are to be terminated, period. Your position in thinking that just paying the money back makes everything okay is both irresponsible and morally and ethically corrupt. Also during the work session, I observed Jan Tully spending more time on her phone than actually paying attention to the importance of theft of taxpayers' money. It is rarely apparent that when you up and resigned from the city council September 9th, 2010, you should have stuck to that decision. As I see it, your morally and ethically compass has drifted off-center. To make matters worse, yesterday, the mayor was quoted on Cleveland.com, "Mayor states that you can't stop the action of a motion by vetoing it. The point is, I have to say something." Your words are an embarrassment to yourself and to the residents of this city. Lastly, theft in any capacity and the willingness of any employed person of the city to overlook and cover up theft will not be accepted nor tolerated by the taxpaying citizens of the city. As I see it, voluntary resignations are in order for the mayor, Mr. Molnar, and Jan Tully. Have a good evening.
Hey, John, just to point out something. When you give half of the story, like you just did, I did say that when the mayor did not pay for his trash or his snow plowing, that he should pay it back, and it should also be investigated. So if you're going to give the story, I prefer you give it all. And secondly, secondly, let me finish, sir. I listen to you. Let me finish. Allow me to finish, please. That's what I said in the meeting. So if you're going to tell the story, I prefer you give it all.
You are also...
And to ask for me to resign as a result of that statement...
Could I, this is my turn. This is my final...
No, it isn't your turn. This man is speaking. Wait till he's done.
Did you not just vote to not do the private investigation?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Did you guys not, just not vote?
I didn't vote in an illegal meeting. I didn't attend a meeting that was illegal. Il-legal.
What illegal meeting are we talking about?
One that was not brought to the public's attention. See, when we do things, when I do things, I do it publicly, not secretly.
Was there not a vote to not have a private investigation? Was there a vote?
Which vote? I mean, there's been 20 votes on investigations. I mean, you need to be a little more specific as to which one you're referring to.
Did you vote yes or no for a private investigation of the mayor and of the finance directors?
Has there been a vote on the mayor's investigation?
October 9th, a motion was made by Dave Engel that we should have a private investigation. It was passed unanimously by council. No action was taken by council.
I guess that answers your question.
There were also other meetings that were, where votes were taken.
There were four people given to me to do an investigation. I gave those to all of council who chose to take no action until last week, when they decided to hire a different person. So when you're asking, "Did I vote no?" No. I went out and found people for us to select as independent investigators. No action was taken by my fellow council members. So, you know...
Well, I don't see any of this in any of the meeting minutes.
Pardon me?
I don't see any of this in the meeting minutes.
That was in the work session, where I was so busy on the phone that I handed people four sets of names and their resumes. The mayor has chosen to take...
Jan, I watched you. I was there.
On the 11th, 13th, 2014, at a council meeting pertaining to the suspension of finance director Schwab, Mrs. Tully said it is now over 30 days since the authorization was given, and no action has been taken in choosing an investigator. On December 11th council meeting, Councilor Tully, in fact, council authorized to go out and get an independent investigator in October. I am the only one who went out and found there were two names supplied to me by the employee council. Those are from the minutes at those meetings.
If I may, let me comment on this.
Please do.
We had, we had a discussion, and we had a motion to do an outside independent investigation. In that period of time, up through November, there were attempts to first get the sheriff's department to investigate on certain parts of it, certainly regarding the mayor. When we came into a meeting in late October, we were told that this was going to all be investigated by the auditor of, well, actually, the Attorney General of the State of Ohio, and with regard to the allegations against Mr. Schwab, and that there would also be an investigation of the mayor's actions forwarded to the Attorney General. We were told that would happen, and at that point, we determined we would wait to see the results. I said at the time, I was concerned about the length of time it would take. And, but that's the reason that there weren't additional people brought into this, because we already had the auditor of state, as it turned out, and the Ethics Commission involved. When it appeared that the length of time was getting to be too long and we needed to get it resolved, the council during January began discussions about how to proceed to an investigation. And we do have, we do have an investigator that we're going to hire, and we're hoping to get this resolved in the next 48 weeks, and then we can move on from this discussion. Okay?
Thank you. John Golden, would you please address this chronological order?
I don't have a list in front of me, Mayor.
Could you put your mic by him?
I'm sorry. I don't have a list in front of me. I didn't, I didn't bring that. I was there when the private investigator was selected. I know there were numerous occasions that council was asked to select a private investigator. There were numerous attempts made by people on council to bring a special investigator in for the administrative side, because Ms. Tully and Mr. Molnar indicated there are three phases to this, as I also indicated. There was the criminal side, which was the auditor eventually got. It was initially given to the Attorney General. There was the ethical side, that Ms. Hanekin sent the packet to. And council was also told, there's an administrative side of this that needs to be investigated. You can be an atrocious employee and it not be a crime. That's why the third aspect needed to be investigated. And that was told to council several times over, and in fact, I do have an email. I had some correspondence with Mr. Engel. I've had some with Ms. Hanekin. And I believe it's on November 9th, I sent an email response back to Ms. Hanekin stating, "The administrative allegations are the sole issue. Council has direct authority to address. You stated in your email, 'I prefer a rapid solution to the investigation of allegations about the finance director and the mayor, and the chief's actions have superseded council's plan of action. My actions have done nothing to supersede council's plans. If a rapid solution is what council requested, why hasn't council assigned a special investigator to address these administrative allegations that are now two months old?'" That's where we were at. Because of that, my understanding is Ms. Tully went out and found some names, and Jan clared, if I have this wrong, because the mayor called me to his office and said, "Can you help me select someone to do this investigation?" And that was shortly, I think that was the end of November. I came to the mayor's office. He had four names on a sheet of paper. I said, "Where did you get these from?" He said Jan gave them to me, and apparently, those names were supplied to council in a work session or something like that. I don't know. I said, "Explain to me where these names are from." The mayor said Jan got two names from, I want to say, an attorney that she's on a board with. I think it's the Joga County Prosecutor's Office or something like that. I said, "Eliminate those, because it appears that they would have ties to Jan." So the mayor dropped those two from the list of four. There was two other names left. One had a 216 area code, and one had a 440 area code. I said, "Ms. Hanekin doesn't want anybody from Cogga County or Summit County," and I think Jan or Nick made a mention that we probably shouldn't have somebody from Starr County, because that's where Scott was from. So I said, "It's my opinion that 216 would be Cogga County. Let's try the 440." The mayor called the person. I think that was Mary Beth Wertz. I think she was out of Chagrin Falls, maybe, or something like that. She listed all her credentials. Sounded like she could handle it, because this was her area of expertise, and that's how the person was selected, to the best of my knowledge.
Oh, John, now, let me just clarify a few items with you. Number one, none of us, this was not a council agreement to have an administrative investigation. That never was agreed to. Second, in fact, we overrode the decision that the mayor made to do that. So start there. Second, I want to know from you on the floor, you said you forwarded both the mayor's issues and the finance director's issues to the Attorney General, which then went over to the auditor of state. Do you have feedback from that second investigation of the mayor?
I have everything that you have. I have the report from the auditor.
Right. You have the report concerning Scott that basically said he had no criminal wrongdoing. Is that correct?
That's not...
Yes, that's basically it, so...
That's not exactly true.
Well, it is in fact true, because I've gone through it in detail. Now, what I want you to, what I want you to tell me, I called the auditor's office yesterday.
Okay.
And I asked for, to speak to the supervising auditor for the investigation.
Who was that?
His name is Mike Spirit.
No, I was dealing with Chris Rudy.
Okay. I know. Chris Rudy is a, is the investigator.
Right. Exactly.
This is his boss.
Okay.
And I went to talk, I wanted to talk to him. I haven't gotten a call back yet. I have sent him an email, which included all the information that was provided to us and, basically, as based on a public record. My question is, you have not received anything back from the auditor. Do we have an investigation number that we can utilize to find out where we are? Because I intend to ask for a public record concerning that.
Sylvia, all I have is what you guys have.
You do not have, they did not provide you with a, as they did for the finance director, they didn't provide you with an identifier for their audit?
Nope.
Okay. Then I will take further action, and I will find it out.
How this happened was, I don't know if it's Jan or Dave, asked that maybe I could find out where the investigation was, and I don't know. I apologize. It might have been...
It wasn't me.
Okay. It might have been Jan. That was, I want to say, middle, end of January-ish.
Uh-huh.
I want to say about the 19th, and I don't know if Josephine has a date or anything, but based on that email request from somebody on council, I then called the auditor's office and said, "You know, where's our report? It's been a long time." "Oh, it's done." Which, to me, since the city asked for the investigation, wouldn't it be prudent that they tell us when it's done? I mean, that kind of seems strange to me. I said, "Well, how do I get a copy?" You have to send a letter, just basically say, "Give me a copy of the City of Macedonia investigation. Send it to this gentleman." I don't have his information here. I've got it back over there, but send a letter to him, and they'll send it out to you. It's down in Columbus someplace, third floor or whatever. That's what I did. Hadn't heard back for a good while. I think somebody then asked again. I called, I asked Sonia to see if she can follow up and find out where this thing is, if they ever got it. She called down. They said, "Oh, we never got it. Can you just send an email to this address?" We then turned around and sent an email, and I think we got it the next day. The only thing we have is, I believe, what everybody on council has. I don't have any reference numbers. When I initially asked for a copy of the report, they just said, "Reference the City of Macedonia investigation," or whatever it was. They didn't say...
Okay. Well, that was just my question to you, if you'd received any identifiers.
No.
It's clear, it's clear that we can apparently access this information, so I intend to follow up and make sure that we get all the information, and I'll be checking back with you. Thank you.
If I could make one comment to Mr. Madajasic, your time is over. If I could just make one comment, your question was...
John, one more time.
I should re...
And you're out of here.
I should resign based on lack of voting for investigator. Time and time again, I'm the one who pushed for it. I'm the one who brought the names forth. Ms. Hanekin tonight says she wanted to wait. That was never indicated. It was constantly said, "We need to hire someone. We need to hire someone. We need to hire someone." I continually said, "I gave you names. I gave you names. I gave you names. I don't know any of these people. I have no vested interest in it. Let's interview one of them." Did I not show up Sunday to vote? Absolutely. And you know why I did not show up? Because what would it hurt to wait four more days in a public meeting that everyone would be attending and no was televised? Why couldn't we wait four days? The action that was taken Thursday, that was a violation of the sunshine law. You cannot take an action on a motion when you're announced that all you're going to be doing is an executive session. So if you'd ask me to resign when I have followed the laws, and I have peers who decided they would do whatever they want on the sunshine law, I think that's unconscionable, and you know me better than that.
Let me correct that statement. We did not violate the sunshine law. We were told that we could do it. We then subsequently had an opinion from the law director that we could correct it, because there was a question about it. So we re-announced the meeting, and we came back in, and we voted. That's all that happened. We're not attempting to violate any law. We have met on Sunday, unlike what your quote is saying. We have met on Sunday in the past, and, you know, I just think that these are small issues relative to the larger question. We need to get on with it. We need to have a finish to this process and investigation, so...
This is not a small question. When you decide that you're going to hold a meeting for an executive session, you then make a motion. Why did you have the second meeting if the first one was valid? You hold the second meeting on a day that no, in 15 years prior to your coming on council, we never had a Sunday meeting, ever.
Yes, we did.
In my 15 years of tenure, excuse me.
We have.
We had one for the budget, because the budget was delayed. That's the only, and that was so we could pay the employees. But the budget was delayed by the finance chair along with the budget.
No, that is wrong.
Finance chair. So you know what?
That is completely false.
You can speak all you want, but the thing is, at this point in time, no one has said we wouldn't investigate. No one had said we would stop. We have been pushing for it. We've had independent investigations going on. We have the Attorney General. We have the Ethics Commission, and we have an independent investigator that the mayor is free to hire. I, you know, I don't know what more. At some point, when do you bring the focus back on the residents of this community and stop focusing on one employee who has had indications? Lack of better term does not play well with others. Thank you.
I just have one question. Why would the, why would the mayor be involved with picking the private investigator of himself? I mean, Scott, why didn't Scott sit down with the mayor and pick an investigator together then? Why would, I don't understand why somebody that's knowingly openly admitted to taking money from our city, why would he be the one that would pick who the investigator is? Why would he be involved in the discussion?
Here's the question of the day. So we had a meeting Thursday. It's an executive session. On the agenda, it stated such. It was an executive session only. At the end of that executive session, we walked out in here. The three folks on that side of the table sat down and proceeded to have a meeting. I stood in front of them, and I told them that you cannot have a meeting. It's not on the agenda. The public's not aware of it, number one. And number two, I made a motion to adjourn, which was subsequently seconded by Mrs. Tully. They proceeded to hold their meeting. After they found out that that was in fact illegal, they held another meeting for Sunday, of which I expressed my displeasure with them holding it on a Sunday, and politely asked them not to do it, at which time they don't regard me in any way, which is fine. The idea to have that meeting on Sunday, I was never contacted or asked anything about a Sunday meeting. Mrs. Tully was never asked about a Sunday meeting of any way, shape, or form. As the public knows, when you hold a meeting on a Sunday, you're probably not going to get a big turnout. The thing that I'm looking at is, why would we hold it on a Sunday? And who were the people at that meeting on Sunday? Mr. Madajasic, I believe you were there. How did you find out about that meeting on Sunday? Who told you about it?
Got a phone call.
Okay. Did that phone call come from one of these three folks over here?
No.
Oh. Interesting.
I didn't call anybody about the meeting.
Well, you know what?
The fact that, I'm not done, please. The fact of the matter is, we're approaching $100,000 to defend a man that the people elected this mayor deemed unfit to be here. We're approaching $100,000. We could fix roads. We have spent the past five months arguing about a man that's not here and is getting paid to sit at home. We got a report this week about that man. It has been verified that that man had lied on more than one occasion. Not criminal, but the man lied. To me, that's enough. What more do you need to know about it? If you want to investigate the mayor, I was told by the police chief that there is an investigation of the mayor and the things that he has done. By all means, absolutely, we should be looking into that. I'm not saying we shouldn't. Never said we shouldn't. That should be looked into as well as anything else. But the fact that we sit here and continue to spend so much time defending a man that has made mistakes and now has been verified, has lied to us, and now we're going to sit here and spend more money to defend that man, and we're going to hold secret meetings on Sundays, when I politely asked you not to do it, what is your reasoning behind holding it on Sunday?
Mr. Molnar, I asked you if you wanted to switch it to Monday night. I did. And you did not respond. You did not respond. I offered you an alternative day. You didn't respond.
What was your rush?
And I'll tell you...
What was your rush?
I'm telling you.
What was your rush?
You complained about Sunday, and you're making a big speech about Sunday. I offered you an alternative day, and you didn't respond.
What was your rush?
So, we're...
Why didn't you respond?
Because I politely asked you not to hold it on Sunday.
Well, she said she...
You guys were bullheaded. The three of you have worked it out on your own. You don't contact me. You don't ask me about any of these.
Well, you're not answering the question. I offered you an alternative day, and you didn't respond. So we met on Sunday because you didn't respond.
Excuse me.
Now, and as far as who lied, I'm not done. As far as who lied, I don't know, but Mr. Molnar, I would bet there might be some times when you have lied, and the actual allegation relates to something that the finance director was not interviewed about. Remember, none of this, the clearing of him from criminal charges, was without even anyone talking to him. So any statements that are in these raw reports are really kind of, you know, in terms of whether he lied about something, they haven't even spoken to him to know that. Now, do we want to go on and on and on about this? No. We are going to, we are moving ahead. We've got lots of things to do for the residents of this town. We want to get it resolved. That's why we want to close this with an investigator who's professional and knows what he's doing. And the decision to spend $10,000 on an attorney to do quote-unquote, you know, administrative investigation, I think that is just way, way beyond insane.
You need to be careful. You just maligned the attorney who's doing the investigation by saying...
I am not maligning anybody.
Excuse me. By saying, "You're hiring a professional," that can be misconstrued to state that the person that was hired is not. You got to be careful. Let me finish, though. You said Mr. Molnar didn't reply, so you held the meeting. I wrote an email that not one person bothered to reply to. Not one person picked up the phone. So answer this question. How did the three of you know that you were going to have a meeting on Sunday? I believe that it was stated by Ms. Darrell that Ms. Hanekin called her and asked for a meeting. So how did Mr. Engel know that that was going to go and agree to it? Are you guys round robbing? Because that's in violation of the sunshine law, and you should be censured for that.
It is not in violation of the sunshine law.
It is. You cannot round robin. What part of round robin don't you care and understand?
We have...
So, excuse me.
We sent an email.
I'm not done yet.
Okay.
I want to know why Ms. Darrow, as council president, no reply was given to my email that asked why I couldn't wait for four days. I want to know why Ms. Hannekin felt it was appropriate, and I gather she did it with your blessing, to be the public press release on behalf of council. Where, as president of council, would you not utilize the staff that we have in place for a press release? We've never done it where one of us did. Second of all, why was there no reply to my email? Zero. We have Ms. Hannekin replying all over the place on your behalf. If you're going to be council president, I would respect that if you would step up to the plate and take the ownership.
Are you done speaking now, Jan? Because I will answer these questions. First of all, the Thursday meeting and the Sunday meeting, Law Department, Josephine, those were open, special meetings. Those were announced. Did you not put them in the paper and give it to the media?
Give it to the media.
Okay, so they were not illegal, special meetings, am I right? Were they illegal?
There were special meetings, and I did give the information to the media.
Okay, that, okay, both Thursday and Sunday, so let's clear that up. I can tell you that if you get an email from Jan, like I just got one, she's wanting, she's asking that we do not do emails, I have it right here, because of the... She wants to have things open, and she thinks that some of the stuff that we need to discuss should not be going through emails, am I right?
Absolutely.
Now, anybody, any council member or the mayor can hold and ask to have a special meeting. I'm not going to say no to somebody. If you want a special meeting, Mr. Molnar wants one, Ms. Hannekin or Mr. Engel or myself or the mayor wants a special meeting, they have that right according to our charter to call a special meeting. That's what she did. She's allowed. She asked me if I would support her. I hung up with her, and she must have called one of the other council members, hung up with him, and asked him. And so as long as you have three, you have a quorum. And she didn't have to get any more, I guess. And I didn't know she didn't call you. I didn't know she didn't call Mr. Molnar. I don't talk to Sylvia like that, okay? She called me and asked me if I would support a special meeting. I said yes. That's all I said, and I hung up with her. Now, let's see, what was the other one? There was emails going around that us three have been talking. I left here Thursday, Thursday night. I have not seen this man, talked to this man, nothing. I seen him Sunday when we came in here and he sat down next to me. I was getting accused, all of us, of talking with each other. I hadn't seen him in days since I left him on Thursday night, okay? That's the truth.
Can you reply why you did not answer my email?
Because she called a special meeting, and she announced it, and we came in for a special meeting. Just show up or don't show up. It doesn't matter to me if you show up or not.
Why do you disrespect your fellow council members by not replying?
I'm not the one who called the special meeting.
Sylvia replied... Sylvia replied to... But you're the council president, so I came to you asking why the rush. I have never gotten an answer of why the rush.
Because I don't have to answer you. She called a special meeting, it's her... If you can, if she wants to call a special meeting, or you do, or Mr. Molnar, or Mr. Engel, they can.
You don't have to ever reply to me. Thank you, that explains it.
She explained it to you by email.
That explains it, thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
We need to go on in our public comments. We've got a young lady here sitting waiting to make some. Barb, you're next on the list. Mark, could you move your mic toward you? No, this one, toward you.
Well, I'm glad I had the time to get more information. I wrote down that I wanted to tell you about the roads. I don't know who thought that by not fixing any holes, they were going to get better over the winter. They're not. It, we have, now I'm going to tell you about Valley View Road. I don't go out that much, but when I go, I intend to go on a safe road. And I have to say, our service department, my road was great. I went out when it's snowing, I had no problem that way. There are some potholes. They're not big in width, but they're so deep. And you can avoid them if you move over to the yellow line. But it's on a hill, and you're not going to see who's coming at you. I'm going to keep moving over. Whatever happens. Now about this special meeting. You're saying that the media had information about the Sunday meeting? What media?
We let the newspaper know.
What newspaper?
The newsletter.
We get our newsletter on Wednesday. That's after the meeting. That, you know.
It's also posted.
And you said that this meeting was announced? Where was this meeting announced at?
Josephine.
It's also on the public, on the online calendar. I have several requirements where it has to be posted.
My computer is down, and there is nothing on Channel 17 on cable anymore. Where... It's like you didn't want the people to know. Okay, the other thing, I have a very, very good question. I've been thinking about this finance director thing. Makes really no difference to me if he works here, if he doesn't work here. I don't know the man. He's never talked to me. Where can I sign up to get a job and do a crappy job, and you're going to fire me, and I get to keep collecting my pay? Is this what we do with all the employees that have been let go through the city? Is this what we do... Jim, is this what we do with any maintenance workers that are let go? We just keep paying them? People at the rec department? Is this what we do with them? Okay. Jim?
No for me.
When you let somebody go, you don't keep paying them? And we don't go through all this stuff and investigate? John, is this what we do in your department?
No.
If someone is wrong, they're gone. Or if you think someone is not, you are in charge. If someone is not up to your standards, even if they're doing a tough job, and they're let go, they're let go. There's millions of jobs out there. We're spending all this money. This is stupid. The other thing I have to ask is, we have these beautiful new garbage cans, and I love them. I really truly love them. But I have a problem. My drive goes uphill, and it's ice. I can't get my garbage can up there. Will they still pick up our bags?
Yes.
Okay, because I can get my bags up there in the car. I just wanted to make sure. I asked the girl when I called there, and she said, "I don't really know."
Yes.
Check with your city. Okay.
Well, they'll pick up anything you put out there, Barb. Putting the cans out, for instance, tonight, I was grateful that I didn't have to put my can out because it's so big. My driveway has still got ice on it, and the hell with it. Let it sit there until next go-around. Maybe it'll be better. So there's advantages that the cans are bigger, they'll hold more. Maybe you don't have to put it up and down when it's icy, maybe. And as far as the streets go, you know, it's really unbelievable, the kind of service director we have, because we're short men.
I know.
Look at his wrist. He was out there patching holes with his men. I've never heard of that, where he actually got out there trying to do the best they can to patch these holes because they're so bad, and we're shorthanded.
I know. I know. And that's, I do want to say, our roads were great. I had to go to a friend's house on a side street. Our roads were great. Thanks a lot. Thanks to everybody in the department. I know. Okay, that's all.
Thank you.
I want you to know where I can sign up to get a job, okay?
All right.
You want a job?
Now, all of that, I lost my position. All right, that's it for the public comments this evening. We're going to move on to pending and/or new legislation, starting with Ordinance Number Eight, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Ordinance Number Eight, 2015, for second reading by title only.
An ordinance amending codified ordinance 54910, possession and discharge of firearms.
And what's your pleasure?
Mayor, it was just a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, second reading. I'm still shuffling papers. Okay, this is yours. Sorry about that, I apologize. Next is Ordinance Number Fifteen, 2015.
Mayor, I move that we table indefinitely Ordinance Number Fifteen, 2015.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
And for explanation, the reason this is being tabled is, unfortunately for us, Robert Ranta, who we were going to hire full-time, has already found another job and has declined the offering that we had put on the table.
Moving on, Resolution Number Twenty, 2015.
Mayor, I offer Resolution Twenty, 2015, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
A final resolution requesting the Director of Transportation to proceed with the resurfacing of portions of State Route 82 from the West Corporate Line to Interstate 271 and declaring an emergency.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post, according to law, Resolution Twenty, 2015.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
By way of explanation, this is to repair the area of 82 that is in pretty bad shape right now between Route Eight and going down to 271. And I say yes.
Ms. D'Monar?
Happy to say we're paving another road, yes.
And Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Resolution Twenty passes. Once again, folks, this is going to cause some traffic problems. Let me urge everyone to pass the word about Nixal so that you get texts when that road will be, it will be shut down right over there by Giant Eagle, right over there where a lot of people shop. So don't forget to get Nixal on your phone. Moving on to Ordinance Number Twenty-One, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Ordinance Number Twenty-One, 2015, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a Macedonia occupancy program grants agreement with Vista, there should be an A there, Springs Macedonia Operations LLC.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post Ordinance Number Twenty-One, 2015, in accordance with law.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. D'Monar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
All right, just so everyone knows, a Macedonia occupancy program does not use taxpayer dollars. It uses money that's generated by the city in ways other than taxpayer dollars. And this is an incentive because of the size of the payroll they are bringing here. Next is Ordinance Number Twenty-Two, 2015.
I'd like to offer Ordinance Twenty-Two, 2015, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with security installations in order to improve and update the security system in City Hall.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post, according to law, Ordinance Twenty-Two, 2015.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. D'Monar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on, Ordinance Number Twenty-Three, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Ordinance Twenty-Three, 2015, for first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase of traffic signs for use by the Macedonia Service Department.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, before I offer it for a vote, Mr. Digatana, would you take a few minutes and explain the new signs that we're getting and where we're going to put them and the purpose? I think it's a great idea, and I think we're really moving in the right direction.
Four of the signs are three-foot by three-foot stop signs. They'll be at Ledged Road in North Bedford on each corner. Sorry, sorry. And they'll be just the same as the ones that you see at North Bedford in Pettibone, that size, and flashing. That's a high-incidence area, so we want to keep it protected. The other signs are no-through truck signs that are going to be placed in certain areas deemed necessary by the Chief of Police, that he feels that we should put them. We're getting 10 of them, so there will be five streets that will be able to hopefully keep the trucks off of.
And they'll be lighted too, right?
Yes, sir. They'll all be lighted.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we pass and post Ordinance Twenty-Three, 2015, according to law.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. D'Monar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on, Ordinance Number Twenty-Four, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Ordinance Number Twenty-Four, 2015, for its first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance appropriating funds to add a full-time maintenance worker in the Service Department in the city of Macedonia.
Moving on, Ordinance Number Twenty-Five, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Ordinance Number Twenty-Five, 2015, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance appropriating money in order to pay for the insurance claim expenses for the, for the Ohio Municipal League Plan.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just make a comment. This is funding that has been set aside because we have a deductible for that particular insurance plan, and we do have a lawsuit ongoing, Pla Farnhurst. And this is to complete the expenditure of the deductible. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Ordinance Number Twenty-Five, 2015, for its, excuse me, I think I already did that. I would like to, I propose we pass and post the Ordinance Number Twenty-Five, 2015, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yep.
Mr. D'Monar?
Yes.
And Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Ordinance Number Twenty-Six, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Ordinance Twenty-Six, 2015, for first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance appropriating money for payment of utilities of Longwood Manor.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, before we proceed, note of explanation, as many are aware, the Longwood Manor is being restored, and in fact, it has been placed on the Historical Registry for historical properties. We've, in the past, there were no utilities in the building, and council asked that those utilities be turned on last fall, I believe, or maybe last summer. And this is to create line items to fund and pay gas and electric bills. It's $500 in each one. And so with that explanation, I move that we pass and post Ordinance Twenty-Six, 2015, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. D'Monar?
Yes.[1682.54]
Yes.
Ms. Telly?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 27, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Ordinance Number 27, 2015 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
An ordinance transferring funds moved to the General Fund at the end of 2014. That says 2104. I, I don't think it'll be here. But, um, to fund 101, 110, 55, 45 entitled, uh, safety initiatives.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post, uh, Ordinance Number 27, 2015 according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. D'Monar?
Yes.
Ms. Telly?
Yes.
These are monies that we've received from Workman's Comp for, uh, various reasons, and we're putting them right back to work purchasing equipment that can keep us safer. Are there any other motions or legislative actions this evening?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion approving the renewal of application for placement of farmland in an agricultural district by residents Patrick and Laura Deschaine Jr. relative to their property at 9066 North Bedford Road, Macedonia, Ohio.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Are there any other motions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer a motion to move $6,000 from the unencumbered balance of the General Fund to the following, uh, area of the General Fund, 101, 110, 5600, the Senior Snowplow Program. We've had so many snow plowing going on that we need to add some more money into that fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Are there any other motions this evening? Hearing none, let's move on to correspondence from the clerk.
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay. Um, my mayor's report this evening isn't too long, just a couple of things that you need to know about. Macedonia was approached by a retail business recently asking for a community reinvestment abatement. That's a CRA, we call it. Macedonia has not given any CRAs or abatements to retail businesses in Macedonia to this day. I think it's commendable. We have held that standard and yet become one of the biggest retail sales municipalities around. The amount of real estate tax, operating tax, the city receives on an annual basis is less than $600,000 a year. That amount's so low that it emphasizes the fact it's not affordable to run our city on that amount, let alone give up any of that money. So, we had a meeting with those people and told them we just cannot afford to lose any of that tax money unless it would benefit it in some other way. For instance, if someone would approach us to build a hospital or a university, that would be a different story. That kinda economic development would or could bring lots of high-paying jobs. The city would benefit from the city income tax paid by those employees. Actually, the amount received in city income tax from just one of our medium-sized businesses is equal to the real estate tax, the city's portion, from more than 200, $200,000 houses. The business was asking for the CRA, was referred to the Summit County Land Bank. I'm grateful to Patrick Bravo and all the people at the Summit County Land Bank for helping to get financial aid to the company that resulted in them being able to bring their business to Macedonia. His actions saved the city not only money, but gave us the tools we need to open the door for more businesses that will help us to thrive. An electrical power cable dropped this past Sunday, causing great concern over a down-and-live power line right through the Commons, and it also shut down Route 8 and Interstate 271. But I was contacted within 24 hours by Gary Dedado, who happens to be the president of JW Dedado Electric. I have to compliment, first of all, our safety forces. I'm doing a great job. Their diligence and response time, it made sure no one was hurt. Mr. Dedado called me so fast and very earnestly, made it known to me that he cares very much about this area, and he's very, very upset that this would happen. It happened because of an equipment problem. It had nothing to do with, with error by any of his people, and when you talk about it, it really is a miracle that none of those workers that were pulling that cable to put it in place, um, no people, no residents, no businesses, nobody was killed. It's just amazing. And he just sincerely apologized for any inconvenience. The accident was an equipment failure, and he cares about our residents and businesses. In an effort to have more transparency in government, our council work sessions will now be televised along with our council meeting. The camera will not be functional during executive sessions. All right, so let's move on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports?
Mr. Mayor, Planning Commission met on February 9th and approved several signs. Most notable, though, it approved a site plan for addition, uh, dimension unit at Summit Point, uh, which is next door. And I don't know the date for the next Planning Commission.
Once a month, and will be notified. Dave was there, and we introduced him, and he's now involved with our Planning Commission.
It's, it's March 16th at 5:30.
Thank you.
The next planning.
You wear the ads on March. All right, moving on, any other committee reports?
Mr. Mayor, I take 'em all tonight. Charter review met on, uh, February 11th and completed its first review of the charter. There are several, there are numerous things that the committee is going to go back and, and isolate on. We've received some comments from citizens, which we appreciate, a few comments from, uh, directors, and we encourage those additional comments if needed. The originally scheduled February 18th meeting has been canceled, and we're going to proceed. Our next meeting will be March 11th, and we decided to do that in order to allow some additional time to get organized so that we can be more productive in these last meetings. So, the next Charter Commission meeting will be 6:30, March 11th, 2015.
Very good. Anything else?
I'll just mention that those Charter Review Meetings are out on YouTube, and you can find them out there.
Instead of using YouTube, could we now use the city camera that's been installed? That way...
Well, the only problem is, Jan, we need an operator. Uh, yes, absolutely, we could use that if we have an operator here, but...
Though we'd rather see it on the city site. Some people don't use YouTube.
Yeah.
And if you put, if it's going to be an official tracking, it really should be available for that way.
All right, then, Jim, would you make note of that, that we have someone here for the Charter Commission meetings? And that's just, again, more transparency, so that's a good thing. All right, any other committee reports? Hearing none. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. I met with the seniors today at their luncheon, and I just went over a few things with them. First of all, some people sometimes, you know, and some of the seniors felt because they get free service with their snow plowing, that they were afraid to mention if they had any problems. And I reassured them, not only the seniors, but everybody. You have a problem, call our office. We can't fix it if we don't know about it. And usually, we get things done right away. We don't play games. We get them done one day, or by the next day, it's done. Or even that night. I get phone calls, I call my men, they take care of it. Uh, so I just reassured a lot of the seniors, don't be afraid to make phone calls, or anybody else for that matter. You got a problem, let us know. Call the department, and we'll try to take care of it as soon as possible. And, uh, so we went through that discussion, and I think they realize now that they can get ahold of us and not be afraid to do that. Then we talked about potholes, truck holes. The men go out any clear day that they can get out there and do them. Uh, our roads are bad. Well, we're not alone. A lot of times I go out on my own, coming into work or leaving work, I'll take different routes home. I go through Twinsburg, I go through Soul, I go through Aurora. We're not alone with these problems with potholes. It's everywhere. This kinda weather causes, you know, we fill the pothole. Soon as it freezes, like today, it's going down to two degrees tonight. By Sunday, it'll be below zero. Any moisture in the ground, you put the, the material in, it freezes, it just pops. Or when our trucks go by with plows, it just pushes it right out again. And, uh, so, but the men are out every chance they get, and we're looking for the big holes. Uh, there's so many little ones that if they're only an inch deep, you can't fill them. So, we look, we do look for the big holes, and a lot of times we'll do them, next day they're right back again. Uh, so we're doing the best we can. Uh, within the next week or so, I'm gonna be meeting with Mike and Nick. There are some roads I can't fix anymore, and we're finding that problem on Highland Road by South Bedford and between, uh, South Bedford and Route 8. That's something we're gonna look into now. Uh, I have to look into possibly seeing what we can do about the Commons. There's areas that we need to address, and like I said, Mike and Nick and I will sit down, and we're gonna see what we can do possibly to, uh... I have other areas of road, and I'm gonna talk to council, and again, with Mike and Nick, and we'll, maybe that $100,000 we were looking at for full depth, maybe there's some areas that we could patch, bad sections of road. And, uh, you know, that, cold patch just doesn't do it anymore. They're just beyond that. And because of weather, uh, this happens considerably, and we have some bad winters, the last couple winters that are really, you know, what roads were fair are now poor. So, uh, we've talked a lot about that, and, and again, we'll be going over all that. And, uh, anybody that has problems, please, please, call our office, and we'll do whatever we can to help you. Uh, that's my report.
And, um, the fact that we have legislation passing through council right now for, it went for its first reading, will give you the opportunity to increase your crew so that you can better handle problems. Is that right? Is that correct?
Well, it, the more people we have, like I said, we're down six people, and to build your staff back up to where, you know, you have regular crews, always out doing, you know, regular repairs. We need, we need, there's so many things that need to be done, and if you have the extra crews to do it, it's just more work getting done per summer. You know, you have so many months to get things done, and, uh, we need the people.
All right, thank you for all you're doing. Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, council should have received a packet today. It's the 2014 end of the year. Uh, it gives our revenues and our expenditures. It's a breakdown of all expenses, contracted services, engineering, zoning, you name it. Um, we did bring in more money than, than we expenditure, so that, it was a good year. Uh, last year, if you don't remember, I was saying we're gonna bring at least $100,000 more in than the previous year, which we did do that. Um, I also have a breakdown of all the taxes that we receive for the roads. Uh, I went through this with Nick and, and the mayor, and we found out that we weren't getting some of the checks, uh, on the gas and the auto and the permissive tax, so I think we just received another check yesterday for $39,000.
Yes, you did, and that's great.
Total for the gas tax, auto registration, permissive tax, license tax for the roads, we get $692,000 a year. Um, and we're watching those numbers. We, we pull it monthly to make sure now that, that we are getting those checks. Um, there's a review all the way from 2002 all the way to 2014 of what the expenditures were, and these were equal expenditures for year to year through the Building Department. We're running on the same numbers we did in 2002, 12 years later. Uh, in 2008, we restructured the department with, uh, help of council. I had some special council meetings back in 2008 when I took over, and I wanna thank council because it is working, and we are self-sufficient. So, thank you.
Thank you for a great job. That was really good detective work, watching that we get paid the money owed us. Thank you. Angela?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as I previously mentioned in, uh, a former meeting, we are currently planning our first city-sponsored and organized 5K run. So, we are trying to get the word out. It is scheduled for Sunday, April 19th. That is going to start and end at the High School Stadium. It will benefit, uh, the High School track and cross-country teams. We're working with Hermes. We met with them last week for some final details and organizing. Our registration should be available online next week, so I will give that, um, web address at the next meeting. Um, we are going to have different age divisions, and we're gonna have a separate division just for Nordonia High School students. So, we will have awards for the overall top finishers, including high school students, um, as top finishers, that will have separate, uh, awards and prizes for them as well. Uh, we will have a free kids' dash, and we'll also have a one-mile fun run walk for those who don't wanna do the entire 5K. Um, a lot of people who don't wanna do the entire 5K will do the one mile. A lot of families with strollers and pulling wagons and things that they wanna do as a family will participate in that as well. We are also, uh, seeking out sponsors for this event, so we are actively doing that at this point in time to defray some of the costs that are associated with an event like this, such as t-shirts, race bibs, um, refreshments, things of, of those in nature. So, if anyone is interested, we have sponsorship levels and forms as well for local businesses, uh, to become involved in that. Um, secondly, our deadline was last week for our Membership and Marketing Coordinator at the Recreation Center. We received well over 100 resumes.
Oh, my gosh.
So, um, now is the daunting task of sorting through those, so we're in the process of doing that, uh, currently. So, hopefully, we will start reaching out to people, um, to, to talk to them and bring them in for interviews. So, hopefully, in the next, uh, few council meetings into the future, we will have someone to bring forward for that position.
How are you going to sort through 100 applications? Is Betsy gonna help you winnow through, or what?
Um, usually, I kinda start the process, and I have a, a system, so...
Okay.
That involves lots of piles and, and notes and all kinds of stuff, so, um, so we'll, we'll get through that, and, uh, we'll start bringing applicants in for interviews shortly.
And is the, our 5K called the Nightway?
The Nightway 5K.
Hermes, um, we're in partnership with Hermes. Hermes Racing is an excellent partner. They actually, um, set up everything for you. They certify the course. So, if you have people who really wanna use this and say, yeah, it really wasn't three miles, or 3.1, don't forget the one. They actually go out and certify it. They set it up. They work, um, with us jointly to assure that everything can run as smooth as possible. They are one of the premier racing organizations. So, if you go to hermescleveland.com and you click on the month of April, there we are. You can't register yet, but we're already out in their publications. They create these big books of races for the year. Will be included in that. Um, I usually see that the first time on St. Patrick's Day at a race that I do. So, if you know people who are interested, love to have the more, the merrier. Um, they're a great group to work with, and we hope that we've created a legacy with them. They also do, um, partnership with Fleet Feet, which is the running store, um, on Route 82, close to the Beer Belly Deli, or whatever we call it now. Across, it's always amazed me. It's a, a running store across from the ice cream place, so, you know, you can run and then get that. But I really encourage you, if you're not into running, you can walk it. Please come out.
All right.
Thank you.
Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Engineering Department is working on the 2015 road program. Um, we anticipate wrapping up our bidding documents and, uh, requesting authorization from council. At the next meeting, I'll have draft copies for council. We'll be requesting authorization to go out to advertise for bids.
Okay, great. I was gonna ask you when, but now I know, okay.
Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I would wanna, wanna remind everybody to clean out around their fire hydrants, especially in some of our condo associations. There's not a, there is a high volume of snow, not a lot of places to push it. I did go out and tour. Don't, don't allow the snow plows to plow in your fire hydrant. I see a lot of, a lot of that. If you need for us to come out and dig out a hydrant, we will come out, but we don't want it buried the next day. So, um, if you're, if you're plow drivers plowing them in, please ask them not to do that. And also, keep your house numbers visible. A lot of times, they're on rocks. They should be placed on the house, which is our ordinance, so that we can find you, um, quickly in the event, so. And also, Jan, you mentioned Bob Bolton. Bob Bolton was a huge supporter of the fire department. Um, he would always call before Pancake Day, never missed a Pancake Day, and would always call before. He was always anonymous. His name was never attached, but huge, huge supporter, so he, he will be greatly missed. There was always Wendy's card showing up for the kids in any event that we had. Um, our Halloween party, huge, huge supporter, and never wanted his name attached to anything, but he always came through for us. So, he's gonna be greatly missed. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Tim. John?
Just reiterate, uh, what Tim said. Keep your numbers visible. We had a call first thing this morning about, uh, 6 o'clock this morning. Northfield couldn't find an address, 'cause the, the, I think their mailbox got knocked down, and they couldn't see the numbers on the house, so it's extremely important. So, it's extremely important that the police and fire can see your address. So, make sure you have big numbers on your house also, because when it's dark, it's a lot harder to see, or dark and rainy. So, please, keep your numbers visible. No other report, Mayor.
All right. Mark?
No report, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Do we have any new business?
Before we go into new business, I have two quick questions. One about the giant holes. Not the streets, but in the parking lots and our various retail establishments. Do we communicate with them, or do we have any ordinances or any way to work with them to assure that those are resolved once the weather breaks?
We'll be driving through, and then we'll be sending friendly letters to them to make sure that their potholes are fixed. It's more of a, it's a maintenance.
Thank you. I'll be glad to tell you a couple, but it's like...
Right.
There's some you can't avoid, to Mr. Lugo's point. You know, you go to the other lane, and there's another one. And I get it, the weather's been bad. The other one is a question I received from a resident. It's probably Nick. On 271 with the widening, would there be noise walls installed?
Yes, the noise walls will be at the tail end of the project. They did do environmental testing for the warranting of the noise walls. That will probably be in 2016, towards the end of the project, they will be putting the noise walls up. And I actually just received probably a second submittal on the detailed engineering drawings for the noise wall. So, I, if you're looking for specific information as to location and height, the information's getting to the point where I can provide you, you know, if you have a question on a particular property, is there going to be a wall there? And if so, how high is it going to be? That information is becoming available.
This person is not by an entrance or an exit, so, you know, it's more in the general. More towards Nora Michaels is?
Yeah, if you send me an address, I could be able to tell you.
Thank you.
I did get a call from Tony Ranker a long time ago stating that they would be putting in noise walls. And the difference was that they had an open house, talked about the road. People showed up. Our residents went, they told them, "We need noise walls." And he called me to say, "We're going to do that." But it would have never happened if those people hadn't come.
I've heard some complaints about the noise as they're, they're driving in those pylons over there, right near the railroad bridge on Ledge Road. It's pretty loud, apparently, and it goes from 7:00 in the morning to night and night or something. Is there anything, you know, is there, that's just basically what they have to do in order to get this done, right?
Right, yeah, it's pretty noisy when they're driving pylons.
It sounds like it's really unpleasant.
It is, but they're on a very tight schedule, two years. It's unbelievable, I don't know how they can possibly do it. Any other business?
Before I forget, one more time, Chief. Can you tell everyone how to get attached or get NIXLE? I got to tell you, that is the best thing, to get the little notification when a road is closed or something's going on. The other night with the commons, with the wire.
Whoever knows how to text, the number is 888-777. And then in the message section, it's our zip code, 44056. It's a wonderful thing. Some folks have approached me that they don't get text messages, but maybe emails. You can, if you can't do it via text, you can go on nixle.com, N-I-X-L-E dot com on your computer. Hopefully, you have a computer if you're going to get email.
I have it on my phone all the time.
Exactly.
I was in my car, ready to go to the commons Sunday.
And you saw it.
And I said, "Let me check my phone to see," because I was waiting for a phone call. I'm like, "Okay, dog, we're going to the commons."
Some folks don't get text messages.
There is an app for it, too.
Yeah, there is.
And that you could just do it and put in...
But some of the older folks approached me and said, "I don't, I don't have a smartphone, how can I get it?" You can get it via email if you sign up through the Internet, because when we send out a text message, there, we click on a box for an email. We also click on a box to Facebook, so it appears on Facebook. The message is only as good if my dispatchers have time to put it out. If they don't have time to put it out, it doesn't go out. They have to remember to put it out, and they have to click on the appropriate boxes if you only have email, or if you're getting it on Facebook or whatever. But I sent one out, I think, yesterday about the wire across Route 8. So, we use it as best that we can. It's only good if people get the information, you know. It's a wonderful service, it's free to the city, it's free to the residents. You don't have to live here to utilize it. If you work here, you can get the service and see that a light's out or something's down or whatever, you know. If you shop the commons a lot, you, several cities, I think Streetsboro has it, and, you know, so, that's how you do it.
271 Bridge will come down over 82, and another one will be put up. 271 Bridge over Ledge will come down, and a new one being put up. The road's being widened to six lanes. A new ramp is being put in. 82 will be resurfaced, both on the east end of the city and the west end of the city. You need NIXLE.
Yeah, I think the last, let's see, five of the six, or seven last posts are road closings. So, we use it a lot. Nick was just notified, I think it was Friday evening, that they were going to close the road, North Freeway, on Monday. It's one of those things where when they tell us, I put it out as fast as we could. So, it's, it's not like the city's holding back, but we get the information. We try to put it out there as fast as we can. I sent another one first thing in the morning, and that's one of the things my dispatchers asked me, is at what point do we, at what point do we not put a NIXLE alert out at night? And what point is it too early to send a NIXLE alert out in the morning? So, we, you know, we got to kind of be cognizant that some people aren't up at 6:30 or whatever, and you got to... And early, when we first had it, I know the State Patrol signed up for NIXLE also, and I think just recently, I got something from Putnam County. And I called the Colonel, and I said, "This can't happen, we can't..." People up in the northern part of the county can't need to know what's going on on a county road the southern part of Ohio, because people will not sign up. And he said there was an issue with the new dispatcher. So, you shouldn't really see too many of those, but, you know, things happen. But it's a wonderful system, I mean, it really is.
Good job. Anything else?
Questions for adjournment?
Second.
Josephine, can you do a roll call, please?
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannigan?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner? Ms. Teller?
Yes.
Thank you for coming. Happy Valentine's Day, President's Day.